We would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. I'll turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith.
Thank you. Mayor Watkins.
President.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Dykens.
Here.
Councilmember Savage. Is online with us on Zoom. Councilmember Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We would like those who would like to be part of our invocation, which will be given by Pastor Dennis Cronkite of College Park Baptist Church to stand, after which we'll have our pledge of allegiance given by Councilman Smiley Ward.
Our God in heaven, we thank you that we can come to you seeking your wisdom and your help during these times of great need. We thank you, Father, for the representatives that lead us. Good people, we're thankful for each one that you have brought into the lives of this city. And Father, for your blessing upon Kingman and our area. We give you thanks and recognize that you are the sovereign over this this area as well as each of our lives. And so, Father, tonight, we implore heaven for this meeting, for wisdom, for decisions that are being made and are considered, and pray, God, that you would have your hand upon us. We pray for the favor of heaven upon not only this meeting, but our city and the days ahead. And thank you, God, that we can have the privilege of calling out to heaven, knowing that we in ourselves are insufficient for great leadership or for great decisions. So we look to you and ask for that help from heaven. And for we pray it in the great name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda items. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, presentations, 1A, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR Presentation. Rachel Ormsby, CPA and partner with Forvis Mazars LLP, will present to the city council a summary of the audit results and the fiscal year 2023-24 annual comprehensive financial report. Rachel?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
You're coming in loud and clear.
Okay, excellent. Well, good evening, everybody. I know we had submitted our presentation. Does somebody have that loaded, or do I need to queue that up?
If you could share that from your side, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Absolutely. So let me... We've learned so much through the COVID era with technology. So let's see if I don't butcher this. This one, Tiffany?
Mm-hmm.
And then we need to get it to presentation view. You think that's right?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. Well, perfect. Well, I can't see you all, but we can see our presentation and ourselves. So, good evening, everybody. Very happy to be here virtually to present the fiscal year 24 external audit results. As was mentioned, I am Rachel Ormsby, and I serve as your audit partner. And I also serve as the market industry leader for our firm in this region for public sector, specializing in working with governmental entities across the South. And then Tiffany is here with me. I'll let you introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Tiffany McCallvo, and I was the audit manager for the city audit and the other deliverables that we provided the city with for fiscal year 24.
Perfect. So, thank you for the introduction. And I'm sure you're all wondering, Forvis Mazars. We are a new name in the marketplace. However, we've been around for a very long time. I started with our firm about 15 years ago. We were previously BKD. And then, as with many firms in the market, there have been a lot of mergers and acquisitions. And so, back in June of '24, we became Forvis Mazars. We did a merger with another firm to really position us as an international firm. We are a top 10 firm. You know, we have clients and offices all across the United States. And you can probably tell I am not a native Arizona individual. I live and reside in Texas. However, I do spend a significant amount of my time in the Arizona market. I probably spend about six months of the year traveling back and forth between Texas and Arizona. So, super excited. We are new to the city. This was our first year to complete the audit. And I know Tiffany's going to go over the audit results. But I, you know, as the audit partner, I'm very pleased with how this first year audit went. I believe, you know, coming in and providing a fresh perspective, I think, was great. And also, you know, we issued all of these audits that Tiffany's going to go over, I believe, over a month earlier than the prior year, which is, you know, just kudos to the team that you have on staff. Tina and Wendy have been excellent to work with. And I think that's just a true testament to being able to bring, you know, new auditors on and also be able to get this audit issued in a very timely manner, as well as earlier than the prior year. So, this is just a little bit, you know, about our firm, our purpose, our mission, our vision. I'm not going to certainly sit here and read this to you all, but I think the biggest thing is that we pride ourselves on providing all of our clients with an unmatched client experience. And I hope that your team, and I can't see them, but I hope that your team can attest to the fact that we did provide that for the city. And again, just very proud to work with you all. I'm proud to present these results tonight. And then, so Tiffany's going to go over the kind of audit scope and results. And then I will go over what I believe are some kind of key metrics for you all. And then we'll round it out with any questions that you all have. Okay, Tiffany, take it away.
Yep. So, for the audit scope and results, so there were several items that we were engaged to do for the city this year. So, first and foremost, we did an audit over the ACFER, which is the city's annual financial statements. The city also received quite a bit of grant funding this past fiscal year. And they had enough that it was over the 750K threshold, which triggered a single audit for the city. So we also did a single audit and reported on the schedule of expenditures for federal awards. And then, in conjunction with some of the state statutes, we also did a report on the annual expenditure limitation and the highway user revenue compliance. And then lastly, we also did the tri-annual review or examination over the court and the requirements, making sure that, you know, they're doing everything that they're supposed to be doing as well. And so, as a result of all these different deliverables, we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best of the best. It's the highest level of assurance that a city can get. And so, in layman's terms, it's basically like an A+ on your report card.
Yep, very good. That's what every governmental governmental entity should strive to achieve, and you achieved that for the fiscal year.
And then, just some things that we wanted to point out that are within the financial statements. So, in note one of the notes to the financials, that's going to be where a lot of the significant accounting policies that the city follows are described. And then, there weren't any alternative accounting treatments that were brought to our attention during the audit. And then, lastly, kind of with like any set of financials, there are management judgments or estimates. And so, some of the main areas where these estimates are apparent is in allowance for your doubtful accounts. And then, within the net OPEB asset and the related deferred inflows and outflows, as well as the net pension and OPEB liability and those related deferred inflows and outflows, the total OPEB liability and its related deferred inflows and outflows. And then lastly, related to leases and the subscription agreements, there's some key estimates there as it pertains to the discount rate, the term of the agreement, and then the payments term or schedule within that agreement.
Very good.
And then, kind of continuing on that, so for each of those estimates, there's financial statement disclosures contained within the notes that kind of dive into each of those estimates a little bit more. And so, we've listed kind of what those disclosures are. And then, moving into audit adjustments, there were not any proposed audit adjustments. The only adjustments that we did make were ones that were outsourced to us in the beginning of the audit and the engagement letter. And those consisted of entries to record pension and OPEB balances for fiscal year '24, as well as the adjustments for converting from modified or cruel to a full of cruel basis, which is mostly related to taking your governmental fund statements to the government-wide fund statements.
Yep, excellent. So, all in all, you know, what that means for you all as a city council is, you know, interim reports that you receive throughout the year, you know, you can have trust and confidence that the financial statements are accurate. You know, as part of our audit, you know, it's a testament that the fact that we came in and we did not have, you know, significant audit adjustments, which is, in my opinion, excellent. And kind of along these same lines, in terms of, in addition to these clean, unmodified opinions, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or any material weaknesses in internal controls. You know, as being the new, you know, team on the block, the new auditors, we came in, and I'm sure the team can attest, you know, getting an understanding of all the internal controls with respect to cash receipts, cash dispersments, payroll. You know, we did a lot of analysis around that and just making sure that there were really good proper segregation of duties. And we did not determine that there were any significant segregation of duties conflicts or findings with respect to internal controls. So, very, very good. And then, really quick, a lot of these charts that I'm going to go over really quick, these are included in the management's discussion and analysis of the ACFER. And so, if you haven't had a chance, I always encourage city councils, you know, I know the ACFER, you see it once a year, and it's a 200-plus-page document. But management works really hard to prepare. It's 10 to 15 pages at most. But it's that management's discussion analysis at the front of the book that really just gives the readers of the financial statements an overview of what happened in your city during the fiscal year. And so, these charts are taken directly from that book. And so, this just kind of shows how the governmental activities trended compared to last year. And so, kind of the biggest thing here is that, you know, the city has, you know, continued to stabilize after the COVID-19 pandemic, right? And so, you've got a stable economy. And also, with the, you know, East Kingman Connection Project, that has led to some big increases from the prior year. And then, on the flip side, when looking at the business-type activities, if many of you recall, in fiscal year '23, there was that very large settlement, about $53 million for the remediation of the draw site at the airport. And so, that's why you'll see in '23 the big influx of the operating grant revenue in '23 that was a one-time, you know, did not repeat in '24. However, you know, there was expenditures that did occur in '24 related to that settlement out of the airport. So, those are just some kind of big swings. But again, things that I'm sure have been on your radar. And then here is just another trend of the expenses over this year compared to last. Again, you know, a lot of activity with the I-11, you know, connection project and maintenance costs. And then, with the business-type activities, you know, as things throughout the year need to be repaired and maintained, the business-type activities did see some increases compared to the prior year there. And so, with that, I'm going to stop sharing because I can't see you all. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions that anyone has at this time.
Counsel, any questions for Rachel or Tiffany? Okay, we have no questions over here. Rachel?
I'm on my phone.
Oh, Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, for the sake of our citizens, can you explain what OPEB is, please?
OPEB?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Some of my favorite topics. So, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And so, that is typically related to retiree health insurance. And then, kind of along those same lines, that, you know, the city participates in, you know, pension, right? And so, there's also a liability with respect to pensions. Does that help answer the question?
Sean? He's not responding, Rachel. There you are.
No, I, my finger's all over the place. I just wanted the citizens to know kind of what that was about.
Absolutely. And a lot of this is derived from, you know, the actuaries. They, the city, you know, has an actuary that assists with all of these calculations to come up with the liabilities reported in accordance with GASV.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think that's it as far as questions, Rachel and Tiffany. So, once again, we appreciate your company and all you've been able to do for us.
Absolutely. Well, thank you all very much. And thank you to the finance team in the room for all their help and hard work and cooperation in this external audit this year.
Okay, real good. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too.
Item number one, B, A.I. 11 interchange project update. Arizona Department of Transportation District Engineer Anthony Brosic will provide counsel with an update on the I-40, I-11 projects. Anthony, welcome. Did I kill your name? Is it Brosic or Brosage? Brosage?
Brosage.
Okay, sorry about that.
Quite all right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Happy to be here to present some project updates. I-11 is always a fun one to call this. So, we technically don't have any I-11 projects yet. But we all know the future alignment is coming. With that being said, let's start off with some of the current projects we have. If you haven't noticed in town, we have the West Kingman TI project that's going on. And I do have some pictures to follow up here to show you guys. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Rancho Santa Fe slash Rattlesnake Wash TI. I threw that in there for some fun. The I-40.
Thank you, Anthony.
You threw an I-11. I guess we're even. We do have a project over for fiber of California border to Flagstaff. And that is running through all these active projects, as well as the East Kingman TI deck replacement. Needle Mountain, as well as the California border, Needle Mountain and Havasu projects are underway. It's almost the last bit of pavement we have on I-40 west of Kingman to wrap up. Walnut Creek, the Holy Moses pavement pres is pretty much coming to an end. And then, we have the US-93 Cane Springs project that is just kicking off. And that is a widening to four lanes there.
Do you want to give us a little more information? I know with the Tri-City Council last week, you gave a little more depth of where that is. That'll actually complete four lane between
Wikiup.
Forty and Wikiup, right?
Yes.
That's big.
The interchange at 40 and 93 south still needs to be improved to be a full-service interchange.
Sure.
But as far as the four-lane section of road, that will be the last section north of Wikiup. So, it's just in that little dip there where you neck down for a mile or two, then, yeah, finally getting that one squared away.
We're glad to see that.
So, some pictures. Here's the West Kingman TI. Lot of earthwork moving for sure. Go to the next, please. The big thing you'll see with the line of 93 is essentially a tunnel. It looks like a big box culvert. That will be the new alignment for northbound Beale Street. The 93 connections, both north and south, will go over top of that tunnel. And then, Beale Street is widened north and south to go around where the 93 will touch down. And they all connect on the north side of town there. So, next. No, you're fine. We did a lot of earthworking. See the picture on the left? Taking down those slopes and building that up. They do have that little knob, I'll call it, still to remove. And that's what you currently see when you drive out there. So, that hillside will come down some, and that will be the southbound alignment for Beale Street. The other way. There you go. One more. The Andy Divine project, we've talked about it. Picture on the left shows all the false work. Everybody has seen what you normally don't see is up on top. We have peeled that whole deck off. And that's why we needed that false work. And we will be, I want to say, next month, beginning of next month, pouring that bridge deck to get that side done. It will be done at night. We need to wait for temperatures. And then, we'll flop traffic once that sets and cures and do the other lane of that same direction, westbound direction. Walnut Creek to Holy Moses, like previously said, it's pretty much done, but simple paving operations. I hope everybody likes it. I thought it turned out quite well. Next, please. Needle Mountain, we're in the repair phase. So, we've not only removed the asphalt, but a lot of the subgrade to try to repair some of the deeper problems that are out there, some of the waves and dips you see in the road. So, this is just showing, we're down about 15 inches there, trying to get that taken care of. Not much on the Rancho Santa Fe TI. We have seen some of the earthwork around Rattlesnake Wash, the bridge. They plan to go under the bridge to move some dirt to lessen the impact of traffic. But the yard is set up, and we are set up with TCB so we can start some of the shoulder work and earthwork to get that stuff going. Upcoming preservation projects. On US-93, the Sanctuary Road, I-40, that's going to add to the number of projects you have here in town. But I know, you all know it's needed. So, we're looking at fourth quarter to get that one out of '27. So, it's still a little ways out. We're going to have to hold it together a little bit, but we are looking for that. The Holy Moses Wash to Rattlesnake, which will go right through potentially three projects that I just covered. That one's supposed to be, I think, advertising next month. Or, I'm sorry, bid opening next month. It's already advertised. So, there'll be some coordination there, but we're looking to get that job done this summer and not go through a winter shutdown. That's the hope. US-93 to Silver Springs, pavement preservation, just right around 93. There is some deterioration out there. So, I'm happy we got a project out there to patch that up. And then, one that's coming down again in fiscal year '27 is Oldie Up to 17-Mile Road. Essentially, the straight section is you climb onto Santa Maria. It's been patched and resurfaced for a bit. So, this will be a little more substantial preservation project. Tony Avenue up by Bonanza and the airstrip up there, calling it airport. But we are exploring ways to handle three driveways at the Bonanza. Can't remember the other two gas stations right now. But if you're familiar with the area, there's a median crossing to get to one side of the road. It's not a full intersection by any means. But the median is just a stop bar and turn. We're trying to find a way to make that flow a little better, angle of traffic, a little more storage capacity, just to see what we can do out there. So, that study's underway. Palo Verde to Price Road, Center of Raised Median down in Havasu. That was part of an HSIP project, if I recall correctly. So, that'll be coming shortly. And then, way down out of your way is the passing lane on 93 just north of 71. It's essentially extending the existing ones that are there. And I think there's a new one in there, too. But we're just taking steps in that two-lane section to increase some of those passing lanes down there and make it a little better. Next, please. Future expansion projects. We'll start down in Wickenburg. So, we have the Gap A project, which we call the Wickenburg Ranch to 89 section. We just did the Gap B, which was south of Wickenburg Ranch. So, we have that Gap A plus Vista Royale that's supposed to go into construction in fiscal year '26. It was in part possible because of a grant that Wickenburg applied for that we received. So, that's been helpful to move that one up. Kingman Crossing Traffic Interchange. Potential.
Actually, Anthony Manager Walsh and I were talking about that after last week's meeting. And I had, I wanted to tease you on that.
Okay.
Because you have $31.5 million. We would love to bring that in at that price.
Yeah, I saw that today when I was reviewing this. I'm like, I should probably take that out.
Or maybe put it closer to what the 44 million like the Rancho Santa Fe. Anyway, I thought we had to tease you about that.
I will update that on the next one.
Thank you, Anthony.
And then, the Big Jim Wash is another four-lane widening. Big Jim is similar to the pavement pres I just reviewed. Once you come out of Santa Maria Head and Southbound, Santa Maria River on 93 is a four-lane sectional road. The pavement pres will give life to the existing roadway. Big Jim Wash will add the new alignments. I believe the current alignment will remain the southbound, and new alignment will be the northbound. So, those are stagger enough that we want to do one just to keep us functional until this widening comes. Next. Okay. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Anthony?
I have a question.
Yes, mayor.
Oh.
Go ahead, Chair.
Hi, Anthony. Thank you again for the update. I appreciate it. On the I-40, Kingman Andy Divine Deck Replacement, do you have an ETA for completion?
Looking at the spring.
Spring?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And I wanted to commend A.D.O. on the project that you did out near Wickenburg. It's nice. It moves traffic. It's nice. It's safe. So, I appreciate the work that A.D.O. did and continues to do between here and that area. So, we got to keep that road safe so that those that travel can get back to their destination in a safe manner. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Counselor Savage?
Yes, definitely. The work done down in Wickenburg was great. Just don't give us six or seven roundabouts, please.
You got one more coming.
As a question, as far as the bypass in here in Kingman, how much traffic is that, or our citizens know, is going to alleviate the Beale Street exit?
I don't have traffic counts. You're talking about the West Kingman TI 93 to 40?
Yes.
Yeah, I do not have traffic counts handy. But I'm thinking about three quarters.
Three quarters?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm just a little worried about the businesses that are down there. But they're still going to have access, just so everyone knows, to get off on Beale Street instead of doing the bypass, correct?
Absolutely. There'll be a, as you're heading westbound, there'll be essentially an off-ramp that is 93 that you can take or go past it and still get off at Beale Street and access anything there. Same thing southbound. It'll just be an off-ramp decision to get to Beale Street when you're southbound 93.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Sean. Counsel, any other questions? Yes, Counselor Ward.
Counselor Ward, can you please turn on your microphone for me?
Sure. Between here and Dolan Springs, that's kind of a far stretch. Can you go back a couple of slides to?
Actually, I think right there, we start dropping down into Dolan Springs Valley. So, about the 48, 49 mile marker, from 49 to here, it's pretty bad.
And then, right there, from So High.
Yes.
On.
From So High.
So, the only project we currently have scheduled, even looking at five-year plan, they're updating that right now. But the one we have designed and ready to go is the Sanctuary Road I-40. So, that gets you, is that about 14 miles north of here? But doesn't get all the way up there. Yes, we're adding that to our project to planning P2P list as one of our next ones we need to get done.
Yeah, I just drove it today, and it's terrible.
We have, what, nine, 10 projects in Kingman here. It definitely needs some attention. But it's not lost on us that there's still more that needs to be done.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Anthony, thanks again for the report. We appreciate that. And likewise, like the vice mayor, I'd like to commend A.D.O., especially on between here and Lake Havasu turn, down to the 95 turn. That roadway has been much improved. It's great shape. And even the transitions, when you go across concrete bridges to, you know, oftentimes, companies have a hard time making that. Those are great.
Just to throw in there, we are looking to replace the bridge at Havasu as well, so. That is a couple of years out, but we are looking to get that, um, not only replaced, but widened. Cuz it's a pretty narrow bridge right now for truck traffic, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, call to the public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Uh, we have one, um, gentleman that'd like to come up from the public, Mr. Waters, Gary Waters. Welcome.
Uh, Gary Waters, uh, Kingman resident. I grew up here. Um, I just like. Sorry. I just like to uh, to bring up the issue that came up during the last meeting, which I wasn't here. I didn't, I didn't attend. Um, basically on the renaming of the interchange across town. It. Councilman Walker brought up just immediately a name. And then it seemed to, to kind of devolve into a dichotomy. It had to either be. Rattlesnake Wash or it had to be Rancho Santa Fe. Um, there are other options out there. There's, there's two reasons why you might want to pick either one of those. The first is. Rancho Santa Fe is a developer name. Um, I worked for the Assessors Office. It was a joke internally. Involving some of these developer names, for example, the Lake Mojave Country Club Estates. There's no Lake. Mojave. There's no country club in the Shranton Estates. You know, it's, it's developer. It's, it's, it doesn't speak for our community. Um, the other side of that is the Rattlesnake Wash. I understand some people were in favor of it. Rattlesnake Wash, it's, we don't need like shock value to pitch, to pitch Kingman. We've got plenty of history here. The name that was brought up, I love, Charles Lindbergh Boulevard or Way or however you want to do it. Uh, he has ties here, and there's people driving through this community. Nowadays, the person that's not driving, hopefully they have their phone. They can say, what does this desert wasteland have to do with Charles Lindbergh? They can look it up. And maybe get a little more interested in this area, you know? You could do Flying Fortress Boulevard. Um, Clark Gable, a lot of people don't know he was married here. You know, even look at old past senators or just something tighter or community. Dick Grounds, he's got a little baseball field. Maybe get his name out there. He was a great person. So um, anyway, just don't stop short with one of those two names. I know that's currently tabled. You're looking at the cost of it. The city manager said it might not be that expensive based on his interaction with D O R. Or A dot, so if you could follow up on it, I'm very curious on where you go with that. Anyway, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that. Item number th- uh. Actually, Annie, do we have any more? That's it?
No, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council. And will be created, be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. And will be considered separately. Counsel, we have items A through I. Is there anything that needs to be polled and discussed?
Mayor? I need to recuse myself from item F.
Item F? Okay. Carl, do we need to break F out? We probably, yes, we do. Okay. Anything else, counsel? Okay, can we have a motion then? Um, approving items. A. Through I, with the exception of item F.
Still moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item three F. Kingman Facilities Remodel Contract Approval. This agenda item is for consideration and approval of a contract to remodel multiple city facilities. The project includes remodels at three fire stations, Public Works, and Kingman Police. A request for biz was advertised and two responses were received. T R O Incorporated was the lowest bidder with a bid of two million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. These projects were approved as part of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. And we will be paid from the Capital Projects Fund. Staff recommends approval. Any further discussion? Okay, Counselor Walker is of course recusing himself. Counselor Savage?
I'm good.
Okay. Can we have a?
Hang on. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Without any further discussion then, can we have a motion approving item F? Kingman Facilities Remodel Contract Approval on our consent agenda?
Show move.
So move?
I'll second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, Old Business for a Creation of a Golf Course Commission. The city council directed staff to draft an ordinance creating the new Golf Course Commission. The commission shall provide advice and guidance in the creation, implementation, and review of the Golf Course Master Plan. The commission shall review city progress. In the fulfillment of the master plan. The commission will focus on promoting opportunities to expand golfing, programs, and community engagement. The attached ordinance will split the golf. Programming from the old commission and replace it with trails. The addition of trails to the commission will highlight Kingman's diversification of all types of recreational opportunities. The end result will be two commissions, the Golf Course Commission and the Parks, Aquatics, Recreations, and Trails Commission. Staff recommends approval. Manager Walsh?
For me, or, yes? Yeah, I, I drafted that after the council made that direction. Uh, basically, the communication pretty much explains everything. Uh, that's the, what the ordinance is about. The formatting of the language is uh, consistent with the formatting of all our commissions. To try and tie them in with uh, master plans and. Uh, ensuring the, the movement or the movement of or the fulfillment of those master plans. And it gives uh, each of those various commissions the ability to tailor some of their. Sometimes specific needs that they need to do administratively.
Okay, any comments or questions for Carl? Yes, Counselor Staley.
This isn't for Carl, though. Uh, this would just be for uh, Mike Miersman. As you're working on this commission, I know they're gonna have. Probably a wish list of things that they, changes they hope to make or improve on the golf course. And I think it's really important that they understand that they'll also need to find ways to pay for those improvements, whether. Um, that's increases in golfing fees or, or whatever the recommendations are, but I hope that they'll look at. Increasing revenues with increasing those. Uh, potentially increasing costs. Do you, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Any other comments or questions, Carl?
And I'll just toss, uh, uh, ordinances take thirty days to go into effect. Uh, this I put in a, a time clock at March first. Uh, that'll give us time to do the recruitment for the commission members. And we'll have a resolution, uh, looking to set the, the date, the date of. Excuse me, the date of the month or, and the time of the month for when they're gonna meet. So we'll bring that back pretty, as quick as we can, and then like say, we'll, we'll come back with some commission member appointments as well.
Okay, thanks, Carl. Uh, can we have a motion then for the creation of a Golf Course Commission?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Sean. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. For B, Electric Vehicle Foundation, Foundation Presentation. The electrical, the Electric Vehicle Foundation will present to council the status of the project and their proposal for consideration. Of course, that's council discretion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, Annie's setting that up and Tasha's coming up. Um, as council knows. Uh, sometime back, the city purchased the uh, five nineteen bill, building, uh, with the intention of, of uh. Housing and Electric Vehicle Museum at that point. Um, since that time, council has stepped back, looked at that and, and weighed other options. Um, the wall, the historic, not the wall, but the Historic Electric Vehicle Foundation has expressed interest in, in continuing that project forward, so. Uh, Tasha O'Neal is here to uh, present where they're at in that project and, and uh, basically their intent moving forward. Thank you.
Welcome, Tasha.
Good evening, council, mayor, vice mayor. Um, I think I have a person on Zoom waiting to be let in. She's here. It's Hannah. I think all of you have met her. Hi, I'm Tasha. Nice to meet you. Um, we're actually really excited to be here tonight with this proposal. Um, after years of partnership with the city and. Um, lots of discussion over the past couple of years. Um. We, I think you all know that we had that appraisal done on the building and. Um, we would like to move forward with purchasing the building. And I, we do have this presentation to go over with you, just kind of to share the status of our project. We have some big things in the work, but without a building. That we find suitable, we can't really attack those methods, but with that in hand or um, full access, we have big things um. In the works. Hannah, are you with us? Yes, can, I want her to say something. She's muted. Okay. Would you like to say hello, Hannah, to our council here, so we know? Okay, we'll move on from that. So we are the largest E V collection in the world. Um, and actually, there's not really any other. Museum of sorts, so Kingman, having housed the collection for as long as it has, has. Received some recognition for the presence of the cars and it's, and it's pretty exciting cuz. Uh, I am a Kingman native and a couple of years ago, probably wouldn't have had much of an opinion about electric vehicles or the history of them, but. Being exposed to uh, this new knowledge and learning and um. My excitement comes because I'm not necessarily. Pro E V or, or not, um, but I am pro Kingman, and I think that um, it would bring something wonderful to our community as far as. I, I know that it would as far as education and um, tourism and. When I listen to what the needs are in our community and I talk with the board that I work for, they, they, they want to help. Complete or, or they, I'm very nervous. This is so strange. Give me just a quick second. Like, I don't know you people. I drink a lot of caffeine. Um, anyway. We, it, it just has a lot of potential and it's a, it's an untapped era of, of. Technology, sustainability, innovation, science, education. There's just so much that can be used through this, this medium of our car collection. And in the space that was purchased for the use of the museum, it's twenty thousand square feet that has the ability to expand to much more. And so there's just so much growth there. Um, and to bookend that with a powerhouse in what Kingman has done. With the Beale Street and the upgrades and the, the just heart and soul that every person in this community fought to have, you know, it would be a great. End piece to that. Um, we also would like to offer some community spaces, whether that's for rent or for use for events or. Three D printer use, you know, cuz we'll have lots of innovative. Options for people to take advantage of, as well as being. The largest collection in the world. It will bring a lot of people here to um. Spend money in our community, to learn about our community, to want to maybe move to our community. So. Um, before going on too much, because I feel myself already doing that, um, we would like. To, oh, I could go to the next slide. You all have this to look at later. Um, there are a lot of benefits that it could bring to Kingman. We've had lots of conversations about it. Uh, we have a letter here that's from the Economic Development uh, Services Department. Um, just kind of, oh my gosh, I can't believe how nervous I am. This is just so silly. I'm so sorry. Um, but I'm just excited, really, more than being nervous and, and we really want to get going and stop. Stop just wishing and dreaming and just get building. And with your direction, um, to open up the. The proposal options, we would like to provide a um. Official proposal to purchase. Are there any questions? Maybe? Breathe. No? Yes? Okay, well, thank you for your time.
I do, I, I wasn't sure if you were gonna continue on with your presentation. Um, I think, thank you for, um, thank you to the group. For your intent. Um, and this is an asset that we have long talked about in budget discussions. What do we do with this asset? How do we maximize this asset? Can you tell me, um, parking is at a premium down here in downtown Kingman? Can you tell me, um, do you have any like? Visions of, of what would happen to the parking? I don't want the citizens to. Either number one, think that the parking is gonna go away, or that, you know, development of this project would, um, you know. Prohibit people from. Being able to come down to our downtown and utilize that parking. So can you talk about parking?
Parking has been lots of conversation. Um, and we understand that there is a shortage of parking and we would like to. Keep the public parking, um, that upper nor- north lot for the public, for the use of parking. We would not be removing that from the public.
Okay, and then can you also talk about um, event space? I know um, there is also a lack of event space in our community, so could you talk about how the group plans to. Um, enhance that for our community?
So just to give an example, in the Phoenix area, the Phoenix Art Museum, the Herd Museum, we've gone to, or I've gone to lots of events that are held. In museums, you know, whether they're legislative, chamber, um, private, you know, these spaces can be utilized. Um. And there are, there, in the rendering, and then when you break it down into the smaller pieces, there's definitely going to be spaces to hold large events or small. Conference room size usage for, for meetings of sorts, but the. Idea would be to have the space, cuz how fun would it to be to have? An event in a museum that's full of cars on Route sixty-six and, and I don't have all of the details of that, but it is definitely. In the vision, in the um, in the renderings, in the, in the phases, I, it would just, it would be there. I just don't know exactly the details.
Fair enough. And then can you talk about the education component? Because um, for those of, those uh, folks that are watching us online that might not have heard of. About this group or project or what your vision is, can you talk about the education component and, and what you plan to do with that in our community?
Yes, so when I came into this unaware or almost um, ignorant to certain technologies, energy. Efficiencies, um, sustainability, all of the, the things that come into this. I, I, my first thought was, oh, E V vehicles, you know? You heard, without being educated on that topic, my, my, my brain goes to, to what I've heard in the media or what I've heard. People discussing, but um. The educational aspect would be offering an opportunity to. Have high schools and STEM programs and, and, and learn, teaching those educators. Uh, through our programming that they could take back to teach to their schools, or having um. Uh, field trips of our local schools coming through and teaching them about the science through the different exhibits and the programming. Teaching trades, so when you have an E V vehicle, you have different components that are new that. Um, whether it's recycling a battery or working on the computer in the car or um. It, it, it's different than what we're used to and what we see, so we would be providing those types of programming that are educationally based. Also. Educating the history of. This type of technology, whether it's going back a hundred years to history where they, they initially started E V vehicles because women. They wanted to empower and, and allow women independence without having to get in a mud puddle and crank. Uh, an engine, you know, they created an electric motor. Um, they didn't go very fast or very far, but, but they gave them some independence. Um, or would it be the. The engine of the rail train going past us fifteen times a day, or however many. Those electric motors help power those. Diesel generator engines. So there's a lot to learn here and I could, I will continue to grow, but that is all part of the aspect of. The experience. Um, Hannah, I thought I might have heard you trying to say something to that effect. Hannah, I thought I might have heard you trying to say something to that effect?
Can you hear me?
Barely.
How about now?
Go ahead.
Just to add to what Tasha was saying about education, we've actually started to lay out a plan. I don't know if you guys know this, but museums bring in over $2 billion per year into local, regional and statewide education all over the United States. They are the single largest nonprofit contributor to education. And we're not just talking about K through 12. We're talking about technical education. We're talking about expansive and STEM education in a whole new way. And that's something that the region hasn't seen, our specific region being, you know, Kingman, Mojave County, in the way that we would be bringing it in. Something that Tasha didn't touch upon, but, I mean, there's so much we could talk about from the mechanic bays that we're going to be building, which will be available to high school kids, STEM, technical colleges, on down to the beginner STEM projects that we'll be doing, like young kids, interactive, entering competitions. It's kind of a comprehensive system that we're building because, I don't know if you guys know this about us, but education is absolutely the central tenet and pillar. And the reason that they brought this to the area and to Kingman in particular, you guys have such a deep connection to transportation and what better city to bring it up in?
Thank you. She sounded so much more eloquent than I do. That's why I was like Hannah, Hannah.
Any other questions for Tasha?
On Zoom. It's easier, right?
Okay, seeing no, no questions?
I do.
Sa, okay, Sean?
So, Tasha, thank you for being here and it was a nice presentation you gave us. How soon and how much finances do you have to, to get this done now?
Well, we have the finances to purchase the building. Initially, we had hoped that we could partner with the city to not, not, not be the purchaser and, and, and use it as like a, a professional service agreement or whatnot. But, so we are going to be directing those funds towards the purchase, but we have, we are confident and have lots of opportunity. I can't fully disclose that, but I wouldn't be standing here before you offering, you know, to purchase this, this location without that plan. I think that Hannah might be able to go into that further, but we can't, I can't disclose a whole lot. We would have proof of funds and all of that good things to show for the purchase, but.
But you feel confident? And does this include the purchase of the lot on the north?
Yes, the appraisal included that parking lot, which we would intend to remain as public parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Tasha, once again, thanks for your excitement. And it's great to see this artist rendition of what the museum could be. And as you mentioned from the get-go, that, and this has always been the thought of it being a bookend between this and the powerhouse for our, all of our downtown and attracting more tourists and tourist dollars. So, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Carl, do we need to make a motion then to have the city manager proceed with negotiations?
Yeah, we'd need some kind of direction on if, it wouldn't necessarily be negotiations because you'd have to put an RFP out. You have to advertise any kind of sale for any type of business. But what we would need to do is basically sculpt an RFP or something along that line just to identify what we're looking for. I mean, you can do the, we just want the most money that we can possibly get, but you might get some speculative buyers. I think the idea is council seems to be focused on looking for something that would promote this area, this type of an activity. So, I think you could definitely craft some language for that kind of a bid process.
Okay. So, I guess we need a motion then for, for manager Walsh and staff to put together an RFP for the sale of this building with all that we have discussed. Can we have that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Tasha, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item five, new business, 5A, City Council 2025 Legislative Priorities. The state legislative session began on January 13th, 2025. The city has retained the Dorn Policy Group to represent the city at the legislature to ensure the city's interests are communicated to legislators. The proposed 2025 legislative policy statement outlines the city's position on various topics important to Kingman. This statement makes our priorities known to legislators and provides guidance to the Dorn Policy Group. The staff recommends approval. And we have Mr. Dorn here, Tom, here tonight. Tom Dorn, welcome.
Hello, Mayor, council members. Glad to be here. And it was great to hear the update on 93. Really enjoyed some of the improvements. You can tell already. So, I'll leave you in later. Thanks for having me here. I, I came up just to talk with you on your legislative, you know, statement, your legislative policy statement and answer any questions that you may have on some of the legislation that's been introduced so far. As you know, the governor gave her state of the state, put her program out there. The budget was released. Her state of the state was, personally, I thought it was probably her best delivery of, and, and you could tell that she had, you know, she's hitting her stride as a governor and getting the words out there and a little more confidence in her delivery. And so, that was noted by people on both sides of the aisle. Her, her budget followed and had some surprise, you know, some things in there that, you know, enough to make everybody upset and some people to say dead on arrival. But at the end of the day, we know that she has to approve the budget at the end of the day. So, even with the increased Republicans, you know, plus two in the House, now 33, 27, and the Senate plus one, now 17, 13 Republican, and more conservative pretty much across the board, kind of like nationally what we've seen. You know, she still is the governor. So, there, she does have to work. Most people predict that she's going to be a little more, try to work with the Republicans instead of vetoing everything because she'll need to present herself as a little more moderate and able to work with the Republican majority that the people put in. So, it's, that's already started and, and, you know, Senate Bill 1013 that Mr. Walsh asked me about, and that was Senate President Warren Peterson's bill about making all of you, if you wanted to raise fees or taxes, your city council or the county board of supervisors, it would take a super majority. And it got out of committee. The Democrats opposed, but things like that, I was telling him, they're just setting it up for the battles, you know, like we're going to put these things out here that, you know, they may push it through, both the House and Senate Republicans on a party vote. But in order to get the Democrat governor to negotiate on the budget, on things the Republicans don't want or do want, they need to hang things over her head. And so, that's, that's the game that has started. You would like to think that we've been down this road before, but we're now in a new election cycle and so here we go again. And so, some of the bills and you have a 40-page summary, a listing of bills, and I know we, we threw everything, plus the kitchen sink in there because we don't want to miss anything. But we also rely on you to tell us, you know, oh, please, like him, Mr. Walsh calling me about that. We are adamantly opposed to it. So, we'll sign in. We weren't signed in before the committee, but we'll definitely do that. Once things get out of the Rules Committee, you can add your opposition in the system. But we'll, we'll get on top of that. But it's helpful to know well ahead what we formally are opposed to. I mean, I could just weigh in with the league and see where, where you guys are opposed or where everyone at the league. But I don't like to do that because you may not agree with the league on an issue. And just because they're opposing something, you may want to be neutral for other reasons or actually even support it. So, I do ask you to, you know, to kind of look, take a look and at the bills that are out there and let us know if there's something that you definitely want to weigh in on and if you want us to testify, if you want me to testify on it or simply just mention to the chair or the committee members that we have a position and we're opposed. So, need your feedback, please. Any questions on, to that point, before we get into the policy statement? Is there any questions on any bills that you've heard about?
I do have a couple that I just, I don't have the bill numbers, but just some things and listening to the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning and High Grounds report that Gail Griffin's going to introduce a bill to repeal INAs.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, I probably, yes, I'm sure it's on our list here on our 40 pages. Yes, it's, she's introducing everything, just like before. And it's, it's the same, it's, it's Groundhog Day all over again.
But I see no introduction of bills for basin management or they, they mentioned that there's nothing yet.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, yes, there is all the Griffin bills and we have Gillette bills. He's got the same bills that he's introducing from before. Let me see with the Griffin. Yeah, Griffin has a bill on her, on the basin. I don't know all the numbers yet. We're only in the second week, so I can't rattle them off my head. I'll find it and, yeah, but it, it's the same bill. It's coming, oh, it's come, oh, no, it hasn't been introduced yet. It is coming back. Senate Bill 1221 from last year that we wrote a letter, that will be coming. So, it will be coming again.
A different version or do you anticipate at least?
We don't know if there's going to be any changes, but it will be, yes, it is coming back, that whole issue. So, it's, it's going to be, it's going to set up the same way. And, you know, the governor in her state of the state, Mr. Mayor, council members, if you, if you listen to it, she did say, you know, if you don't do what I want to do with regard to water, I will take it into my own hands again. And she had it again. And so, that's a paraphrase of what she said, but that is out there. So, and what she did was the Wilcox Basin AMA. The one issue that you all know is hanging out there is the Hila Bend AMA at Buckeye, you know, from Buckeye down to Hila Bend and that whole area. So, we'll see what happens. I mean, it's, it's the same issues. And I know that with the passage, I think with 1742, the, the water bill, I think they got the wrong, the Harkahela that allows entities to set up their own entity, you know. And so, you know, we've heard that about Bullhead and Lake Havasu. What's going to happen there? If they start going into that, because Eslopas County is, to be able to market water. So, we'll, we'll see what happens on all of that. But we know Senator Angus is, is with us and she is, she knows our concerns and we're having a meeting in a few, I think it's next Thursday with her and the Mojave folks and I'll be there. So, that's happening. But there will be, she'll, she has tons of bills and she'll pass them all out and they'll get out of the house. And then we're going to have to see with TJ Shope, Senator, he moved from the Senate Health Committee. Now, he wants to be the Senate, he's the Senate Natural Resources Committee Chair because he's from Pinal County and he cares about the whole ag, ag to urban legislation that the governor vetoed last year, that, you know, they keep talking about how if we get rid of agriculture, we have more water to build houses and, and, and we have farmers that want to sell their land because they don't want to farm anymore, apparently. And so, that's what we're hearing. But is he going to go along with what Gail Griffin wants? I don't know. It remains to be seen.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Tom, I know a couple of years ago, legislature, legislature passed a bill taking away sales tax, TPT, from house rentals. And of course, it affected a lot of cities. It affected our city too, not to a large amount, but I think if Tina can confirm to it, about $350,000 or so. Now, our led, our local legislator, legislators mentioned that there were, there was something in the works on some kind of bill to help the cities back out on that instance. What, is there anything like that going on?
Mr. Mayor, council, well, John Gillette has House Bill 2316, short-term rentals, property classification. And I am not sure if that bill, there are other ones, Selena Bliss, Supresk, she has one. There are several bills out there with regard to limits and exemptions and reclassifying. At the end of the day, do those give the cities more power over prohibiting or capping or limiting or putting more restrictions? That remains to be seen. It is a big issue. The governor, as you know, put it in her state of the state and the cities are united on this pretty much. I mean, we heard that during the league conference, during the resolutions discussion. We, we do need to deal with this. And so, there are several bills and I do, it's House Bill 2308 and 2316 is Gillette. And I have not talked to him about it, but, and there are a few more in here too. And I know the city of Phoenix also is very concerned about it. And some of the Scottsdale, obviously, Paradise Valley, they, they are not happy about what's happened.
Okay. And then there was one other thing that as far as, and of course, the newspaper, the big newspaper concerns have always shot it down. But as far as legal postings, if we could do those electronically, at least, depending on certain city size and that kind of stuff, has there any bill been presented about that?
Yes, Mr. Walsh has, has directed us to work on that and Senator Angus is actually going to do it. The County Supervisor Association also wanted to do that. And, and so, I think it came out of Mojave County. So, when I saw her during the summer, I talked to her about it, about combining the two. You know, saying, we, we know you, I think it was at the CSA Legislative Summit, they were talking about it. And I went up to her at that time because you'd already talked to me about the city wanting to do it. And I said, well, Kingman wants it, Mojave County wants it. She said she'd blend it together. And so, I was actually talking to Eric Emmer with my team about it today. And we're following up with CSA to, to get it done.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
And also wanted to mention the ARTAC legislation, the Rural Transportation Advisory Council. That's 2305, I believe, 2304, and all of our Kingman projects from two years ago. You know, John Gillette made sure those are in there. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's, it's Eastern, it's Airway, Morancho, Santa Fe, and there was one more. We just talked about it last week. There's one more. So, Airway, Eastern. Anyway, we'll, we'll figure it out and let you know. But that's in the bill. All of those are in the bill. And so, at the end of the day, remember, we have $1.7 billion of ongoing one-time spending, which is the craziest, the only government can make that up. And these projects are part of that, you know, because they were in it before. They were part of the one, the ones that were awarded two years ago when the legislature overspent because they were trying to triangulate the governor. And then they had to pull it back. They just kicked it down into next budget year. So, it remains. But now with the new, new people, are they going to still do those deals? Because those were for the budget vote two years ago. So, just because someone got something passed, it may not come back this time. So, that remains to be seen. And Representative Bielsucci, and there is, do we have a, do you have a food tax? If I may?
No, we do not.
You do not? Good. Because there's an effort to possibly put on the ballot, getting rid of the food tax.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, on, on the three projects, it is just the three projects. There was a couple more with the county, but yeah.
Oh, that's right. The two were county, yeah, there were two other projects that were county, but they're, the city would like to see them, but, but the food tax issue and then, and Gillette has a few like private property rights, some of the things that, you know, and Bielsucci does too, you know, the colors of houses, things like that, you know. But Mr. Chairman, that's kind of the overview of, but I'm really here to talk to you about your policy report, if there's any changes, if you had a chance to review it. So, we can finalize it because we want to distribute it as soon as possible. And also, we have talked about dates for the Kingman Day at the Capitol. And just so you know, I saw Becky and Bennett and Josh, your tourism person, all down at the Arizona Association for Economic Development Day and helping them with a coalition letter for Route 66, you know, so you can have all the cities and the counties along, a letter to the governor and to the Senate President and the Speaker and the approach chairs, ask it for, asking for directed funding for the Route 66 through Arizona. So, Josh is a very enthusiastic person. He's a big advocate for it. So, but hopefully that, and I suggested perhaps that when we do have the Kingman Day, that can be one of your focuses, talking about that, along with these other issues that are important. And we were looking at Tuesday, either the February 18th, 25th or something. I think we were trying to find some dates that would work for y'all. I think we were trying to find some dates that would work for y'all, uh, to be down in Phoenix for Kingman Day at the Capitol. But other than that, Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor and council members, I'm here if you have any questions on your policy statement.
Council, is there any comments about?
I do have a question, not as far as what was presented, Tom. Um, I know there's been talk about importing water into California, is there, or Arizona? Is there anything on the legislative list for that?
Mister Mayor, uh, uh, Councilman Savage, uh, I mean, there's been the discussion about water augmentation is the term. And uh, you know, desalinization is the one thing that people talk about. Importing is something that I remember Senator Rusty, Senator Ken Bennett and was bringing up the idea that I guess in the upper, up in the Northwest, there's only so much, there's, it's like not far from the Snake River or Columbia Basin over to the headwaters of the, of the Colorado and Wyoming where like thirty dol, thirty dollar, thirty, yeah, wish. Like thirty to fifty mile pipeline, you could take water that's heading into the ocean anyway and put it in the Colorado River uh, headwaters and have it flow down. You know, so that and the pipeline from the Mississippi Delta and uh, getting it out of a, out of a rock, I, I don't know how we're going to augment our water supply. But yes, there's still that discussion.
Then answer your question, Sean.
I think that's a no.
Okay.
Yeah, there, we talk about it, but it's not happening so far.
Okay, uh, Council, any other comments or questions for Tom? And of course, our twenty twenty-five legislative policy statement, we're all good on that? Okay, thank you, Tom.
Oh, okay, it's all good.
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you very much, see you soon.
We appreciate you, you're taking time to come up and uh, visit with us.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to be here.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, item number six, Department of Reports, six A Land Release Update. Welcome Doug, our airport manager.
It's one of the tabs, that's why it looks.
Okay, okay. Yep, that's it. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, uh, good to see you guys again. We got a little bit of positive update regarding the land release. One thing is that what we have currently went through is on December sixteenth, we went down to Phoenix, Arizona to meet with our airport's district's office. That is the lead group that we speak and we coordinate with regarding the land release. And we did get some positive traction. Um, with that positive traction is we believe, or they worked with our airport compliance office to find a way to allow us to do the land release and remove some hurdles that have been thrown in our direction, which I'll go over to in the future. And uh, with those hurdles, they kind of went through and they said, hey, with that, let's go ahead and request from the city or request the city to do a formal request once again to conduct a land release. And from there, they will send it over to the airport compliance office to receive a LOI, a letter of intent that we're hoping to receive back saying we will, we will still want to, we will give you the okay to pursue with another environmental assessment to begin the process of releasing the land. With that, to develop that letter, um, we had to go back to the airport's compliance manual. We have already resolved, or we already have answers to a lot of their questions they're expecting for the actual land release. The other one is going to be an appraisal. We are currently ongoing with an appraisal for the seven hundred and ninety acres and we're expecting to have that within under a month. That, once we have that appraisal, we plug that into the letter and that goes off to the airport's district's office for them to forward over to the airport compliance office. Um, one thing that's happened since the November meeting, um, really occurring on the December sixteenth meeting, was avoiding additional NEPA processes. The FAA was uh, requiring us to go through an EA, environmental assessment for the construction or the horizontal infrastructures, that's roads, that's utilities, that sewage. Um, and then after we go through that, then for the sale of each parcel going to a company will be a smaller additional EA. We wanted to avoid that, one is that slows down the process. Businesses don't want to hear that they have to wait an additional thirty, sixty days for another EA and then it's not even a guarantee at that point. So um, I got to give our airport's district office a little bit of credit. They went to the airport compliance office who oversees all of this. And they said, hey, look, is there any way we could have a single EA? Whenever they sell the land, they don't have to go back and do smaller EAs. Well, they did, um, they said, we want you to set up guidelines or boundaries for businesses who come in and purchase it, if they fall in within those guidelines, we don't have to go through a secondary or smaller EA process. We could go through the land sale directly and continue with, continue with our appraisals and what economic development has done in the past. With that being said, we're really happy about that, so we're trying to find those guidelines. Uh, we are really looking at what our market uh, uh, value for our environmental development has came out with, our, our industrial park master development plan, the market assessment, what's currently inside our industrial park and tailored to those businesses. At the same time, we want to be wary of the other businesses that we kind of really see the city not wanting, like a coal plant or a heavy water user. So we're trying to define those guidelines to where if we do have somebody that wants to come in and they are going to be really heavily going through our water, water intensive, then they may have to go through an additional um, EA process. Or as I said, if you have a coal power plant that wants to come in, they'll have to go through an additional assessment. So we're trying to define those boundaries for the actual EA to say, hey, all these businesses, light, medium industrial, non-water intensive, not heavy environmental polluting, could go through and we could go through and sell the land and make it very efficient. The ones who will be water intensive, very pollutant oriented, then we keep them out so they have to go through an additional assessment. So with that, um, this is basically going through, um, once again, as I said, uh, once we define those and also get the appraisal, then we send that letter over to ADO requesting a formal land release. They send that over to the airport compliance office who reviews it and then sends us back the letter of intent to release the land. And then that keys us up to go forward with an environmental assessment schedule because we will be starting this over again. Fortunately, we do have the industrial park master development plan ninety-five percent complete and the environmental assessment is also ninety-five percent complete. Plus, it's already addressed a lot of the EA questions, so we're expecting that to move forward a lot quicker than the one-year timeframe. There is one additional small component, it's not going to be, it's not, um, I'm supposed to get estimates on it. It's not going to be a major delay in the environmental assessment. Through the industrial park master development plan, it was determined that we'll need to install a new eighteen-inch sewer line approximately six thousand eight hundred feet northwest of the land release area and connecting into a twenty-seven inch sewer line. Some of that sewer line will be going over undisturbed ground, which will require a cultural assessment, a SHPO assessment and a smaller few pictures just to show that, um, to show that we're really having, it's really going to have no environmental impact. Um, but that will have to be incorporated into the EA. So that's the only other smaller addition that we will have in the environmental assessment. I apologize, I'm still trying to get my voice back. Um, before I ask any questions or, or see if you guys have any questions, the FAA did come out last Monday and they did sit down with city staff, council members and were able to answer some questions and a few other solutions were presented. Um, we're still exploring those solutions, we're having a meeting with the FAA comply, uh, again tomorrow um, to see if those solutions will be viable and if those solutions are provi, are viable, then we'll come back to council for direction. I don't want to say anything too much on that till we actually get some questions answered. But does council have any questions?
All right, continue on. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, Sean, no questions?
Nope.
Okay.
All right.
Doug, thank you for the report, appreciate that.
Item six B Streets Landing Page Update. Welcome, Jack.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, uh, good evening. Wanted to give a quick update on the Streets Landing Page uh, for the website, really, for the website, for the Streets Landing Page. How about we get those in order? And a couple of items, there was three big components to that, really. We had some maintenance strategies and some messaging, you know, what we do, why we do it, how we do it. And uh, also budget and expenditures. And then another item in there was patching and that, that covers kind of two things, potholes as we get requests and then also utility patches from waterline repairs. And so we've been working on that for a bit, ran into a little bit of a snag with the waterline patching specifically. And so we were trying to, we have a, an app that we've been using through our GIS system. Um, has really limited functionality, uh, it actually has some programming issues and so it hasn't been working for us. Mike and his team actually worked with us and with another company that does some programming to see if we could bring that system up to par uh, to accomplish some of the tasks and the messaging out to the public that we were wanting to. And so we did get a proposal back for that, looking at the cost. We've decided to take a different direction and look at a more of an off-the-shelf system that works with our GIS system. There's management systems and that, that actually will solve a couple of problems for us uh, related to that, um, help with our messaging and as well, you know, coming from uh, the council retreat, some planning or, or direction for being able to track our patches a little better and then uh, you know, get that information out to the public, when they're scheduled, when they're going to be done, that sort of thing. So um, we actually are going to put that piece on hold because that's going to take some budgeting. Um, that's something actually, since we're in budget, we'll be seeing you guys very near in the future and that'll be one of the items we have. Um, and we're actually looking at that as a higher level piece and uh, cover a lot of things for public works, not just the patching and, and uh, pothole part. So the other piece um, was the budgeting. Thankfully for us, Tina and her team already has their open finance, which covers that. In the, the samples that I provided you guys before and the basic layout that we were going to use, we had um, a couple of buttons in there that would take you to HERF specific because it covers everything in the city. And we had drilled down and pulled those URLs to where when you click on the button, it would take you to the budget expenditures for HERF. And so those will still be online because they're working currently, but we wanted to make that easy for people to find and access. So the piece that we're actually going to do right now, we've shifted a little bit and we're going to get the messaging and strategies piece up and running. The, you guys have seen what was there, the messaging and, and, you know, history and, and some of the strategies on what we do. So we actually have a, a uh, uh, meeting tomorrow with Sarah, our marketing and communications coordinator. Want to give her an opportunity to see what we're doing before we push it live. Work with her, get any feedback or changes she may have, suggestions. And then at that point, we'll make those changes and bring that live. Uh, unless something big comes up, everything's there. I, I would expect that that would be a quick turnaround, we'd be up and running into this month, into February. And so with that, I'll answer any questions and if not, I'll let you guys get on to other business.
Council, any questions for Jack? Mister Plante, I think you're done.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Item number seven, announcements by Mayor, council members and city manager, Mister Walsh.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, nothing tonight.
Counselor Walker, okay, Counselor Ward, Counselor Staley, Counselor Dykens, Counselor Savage, do you have anything to announce?
Nope, not at this time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I almost did, I almost did, but I bit my tongue.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Nothing tonight.
Uh, and likewise, I have nothing tonight, appreciate it. Council, uh, item number eight, council request for future reports and updates, anything from council? Quiet night tonight, okay. Item number nine, executive session, nine A Kingman Crossing Development Agreement. Staff requests the council go into executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero three A four to discuss the Kingman Crossing Development Agreement, discussion and/or action. Can we have a motion for council to go into executive session?
Shall move.
We have a motion and we have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And of course, to everybody here in council chambers, we appreciate you being here tonight. And uh, we will be in executive session and come out in a little while, but you're more than welcome to stay, but I think most of you will probably leave and have a good evening. Okay. We are back from executive session and we are making, I am making a motion that we are directing our city manager to proceed as directed by council in dealing with the hospital board of directors. Uh, I made the motion, do we have a second?
How second?
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you and all of us have a good evening.